It's 5:30. We'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everyone to the meeting tonight. And just a reminder, if you would like to address the commission in public comments, you need to fill out a request to address the City Commission form there outside the door at the table. And then we'll read those at the appropriate time.
Mr. Mayor, may I make a comment?
You may make a comment.
I apologize. I stupidly accepted a speaking engagement at a graduation ceremony this evening. I don't know what overcame me. But so I'm going to get up and walk out about a quarter till seven. And I apologize to whoever I walk out on. If it's going to be a five-hour meeting, I can come back after I talk and finish up the rest of it. Anyway, I just wanted to let you know whoever I offend, I don't mean to.
Okay. Thank you. Do we have any additions or modifications to tonight's agenda?
None for me. Thank you.
If not, then I'll entertain a motion to accept the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
In favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Next item on the agenda is consent agenda. Do I have a motion? To accept the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Items for commission action. Item number one, consider a request to purchase Pro QA for emergency medical dispatch and Interpol interface. Chief?
Evening. I brought my experts with me. I've got Melissa Adie back here and Lisa Halkenberg, our captain. Yeah, come on up. I brought them in because this is a pretty technical, or could be a pretty technical discussion depending on what you have to inquire about. So I thought I'd bring them in. But Pro QA automates the quality assurance system that we use for emergency medical dispatch. So every month, right now, we're only able to assess the most serious emergency medical dispatch calls. And we just do less, usually less than 10 of those a month. So these are people that are either in cardiac arrest or have a real serious medical emergency. The purpose of Pro QA is to make sure that we're following the protocols that we've committed to for our medical director. And so it's a very, the quality assurance process as we do it is done by hand, and it takes quite a bit of time to do it. The Pro QA will automate that process. And speaking with a PSAP director, a neighboring PSAP director, they've increased the amount of quality assurance that they are able to do on their medical calls because they have automated it. And to my knowledge, I am the, Independence is the only PSAP that is using EMD, that is doing it by hand, that I have personally been able to find or that any of our dispatchers have personally been able to find. And we are the only agency that I have, that I am aware of in my inquisitions that is doing quality assurance by hand as well as this process by hand. And Melissa brought the flip chart with her tonight to kind of show you if you have any questions.
Did you say inquisition? I'm just curious.
Yes, I did.
Okay.
My inquisitors. I have a word-of-the-day calendar like you do. Anyways, the other advantage that this process gives us is it automates the actual emergency medical dispatching process. So as the dispatcher is receiving the call and gathering the information, they're entering it directly into the computer. And the system shunts them through emergency medical dispatch to the appropriate protocol instead of having to use this flip chart. And one more advantage that I can think of offhand is that it interfaces with our computer-aided dispatch system. So as they're entering the information, it fires it right into our logs. And they're able to keep much more accurate ambulance reception and dispatch times as well as actual information gained times. And these things can be important, as you know, down the road if something bad were to happen. Those times can be very important for us to be able to document accurately. So it cleans up the process quite a bit. So if you have any questions, I'll refer to my expert here.
Do you want to show us the card system you're using now?
Yeah. Have you guys seen this before?
I'm in the brown cap. Melissa's a curly-haired one.
Is that you?
Yeah.
I don't have my glasses on. I'm sorry.
I know I'm much more attractive in person.
That is correct.
Hardly recognizable. I'm taller.
Do you want me to bring this up? Or you just want me to show you from here?
A lot taller than what that looks like.
Just from there.
Just show us from here. Okay. Well, generally, what happens is when we get a medical call, we flip to this first card and ask the general questions to show us what card we need to shunt to. And then we shunt to that card. And then we go through more questions. And then we have to find the order to go in. And then if things go south, then, and we need to do CPR, then we have to figure out at what point to shunt to the CPR card. And I don't know if you all have seen CPR card, but it's a nightmare. And while we are engaged with the caller, and generally, they are in a panic, and you have to really reel them in and get them to think straight, to answer the questions and to follow our instructions. So while we're trying to calm them down, we also have to, there's all these little side instructions that show us what card to go to. And it doesn't take much for a critical error, which makes the call completely noncompliant. So with the Pro QA, with the software, we enter the information and the questions pop up. We type in the answer and it automatically shoots us to the next appropriate question. We don't even have to think about it. It does everything for us.
So your hands are all on the keyboard?
Yes.
It's not going from keyboard back and forth to the cards?
That's correct. Yes. And we don't have to, it's one less thing for us to stress about while we're trying to get a panicked caller under control and get them to do what we need them to do. And it saves a lot of time. It also saves a lot of time. Because sometimes if we get stuck, then we have to sit there for a minute and while we're trying not to panic, figure out which card to go to next. And sometimes you have to go to a different card. I mean, you might shunt to three or four cards in one caller. So that's the purpose of the Pro QA system. And then plus, it, there's a system integrated with it called Aqua, which does the quality assurance side of things. And it automates the quality assurance side of things for us. So there's, I am the certified quality assurance person. So it would make my job so much easier if I just had it automated and could just go in and see what Aqua has for me.
So this is so reliable that it eliminates the thinking process of from which card to go to next? Or it'll adapt as the situations change?
Yes. Yes. Everything, the software is already in there. So all you do, it pops up the question, you type in yes, it goes to whatever next question you need to answer. Because not all of them go in order. Like some of them will skip. And it has little side notes, like only if you're talking to a second party, or don't ask this if they're not changing color, or, you know, ask if they have a weapon, but don't ask if they have a weapon. So you have all these little side notes that you have to pay attention to along with, so then you have to skip a question, skip a question. And then you have to shunt to your exit cards, which are back here. So it's just constant trying to figure out. And we don't use, the ones we probably use the most are cardiac and stroke. So if it's a card that we don't use very often, then that really slows down the process because we're not used to it. And we don't have as much practice with those.
So with the proposed system, will this work on each station? Or do you designate only one station for medical?
It'll be primary and secondary, yes.
Do we know if it's going to require a lot of training?
It will require some training. But my understanding is when they install it, they also train us on it. And that's all included in the package. And then we have ongoing continuing education hours constantly with this anyway. So we never stop training on this. They'll show us how to use the software. Two. Yes, it's both stations.
Training is included, both stations are included in the quote and training's included in the quote. And we also got a very sizable discount because she's already certified in the Pro QA side. And the rest of the dispatchers are certified in the EMD side. And EFD and EPD. So because of that, we've got, what would that be? You know, one-sixth, we've got like over $5,000 discount on this project.
So we believe that our callers will be safer, potentially safer, because we can respond real quickly.
Oh, absolutely. And it'll cut down our time on asking questions and getting the information to EMS.
Gotcha.
And it will cut down on any errors because it's very easy human error with a manual flip cards. It's very complicated. And it'll make our job so much easier and quicker.
I think there's also a risk management aspect here. Because as you know, any service that we provide can come with potential liability if something goes wrong or someone determines it, believes that we did something inappropriate or didn't get something done in a timely fashion. Or, you know, you guys know how litigious society is. So one of the attractive things about this to me is the documentation side of it and how it enters everything into our computer-aided dispatch system as it's occurring. We don't, we have to go back and update things as we're doing it now. Whereas this will do it in real time. And so to me, that provides an aspect of loss prevention or, you know, risk prevention.
So when they're done with the call, the documentation is essentially done. That's nice.
Yes. Also, I'm not sure if you all are aware that the International Academy backs us up. So if there was a call that we handled and we followed their protocol to the letter, and if there was some type of legal, some type of litigation involved, they will provide legal counsel for us and back us up on it. So that's another reason why we're really like this company.
Sounds like it takes some pressure off of you deciding which card. That's a judgment that you have to make. And a possibility of flipping a card incorrectly or...
Or even missing an instruction.
Missing a step.
Yes.
That this will take that pressure off of the dispatcher that automatically the procedure and step-by-step comes up. And then I guess the tracking is in the computer. Whereas manual, you have to try and remember to go back and log the cards or the steps that you did.
Yes, we do. And also, oftentimes, there's only one of us in there. So it helps take the pressure, the thought process and the time constraint down in case we get another 911 while we're trying to do this 911, while we're trying to. So that helps too.
It sounds like a good plan. It helps you, you're not multitasking as you are with the current system, having to go through the cards to determine what your next step is.
Yes.
And that takes you away from, you're trying to listen and also trying to move to another card. So this lets you concentrate on what you're hearing. And then the protocol of this program will actually carry you through the process.
Yes, that's a good point. That is very good.
And then you have backup, backup record and accurate time. So yeah, it sounds like...
Absolutely.
Sounds like a good process to me.
So on your, the funding, this was really in the 2019 budget. And you're going to use the money for record management this year in the 2018?
No. We decided not to do the record, we decided not to go after the records management. We need to do more research there. When we made that decision, it appeared that the records management system, quote, would significantly increase our ongoing subscription costs as well as it was just a hair over what we budgeted for. So now, since then, we've been investigating it. And right now, we're trying to firm up if it will, with the different interfaces and things that we have with our current RMS system, will it be a fairly even trade? And so before we make any commitment to an RMS system, I want to make sure that the budget side is lined out and that it is truly an even trade or very close to what we're spending now. The goal is, of course, not to increase spending.
So you're not going to be asking for...
No RMS for 2018.
For 2018.
No. No. When we saw the numbers come in on the RMS quote and the other increases that it would incur over follow-up years, we decided that let's just go to priority dispatch and see if we can make that work. And then that gives us this budget cycle to investigate, is it truly an increase over the long term if we go to a new RMS system? So we're still looking into that.
Then the other portion of the capital budget, is that coming out of your capital and budget items? Or are we taking it from somewhere else?
For the computers? No, that's coming out of, the whole project comes out of our capital budget. These are all things that were allotted in our capital budget.
The computers, okay.
Yeah. The setup fee is for the computer system to integrate with the Pro QA. So that's why I asked to go that route. And that leaves another $6,000 in the capital budget for computers for 2018 if needed.
You had $5,000 for computer replacement. Yeah. And we're looking at a total of $30,000. Yeah. Sounds like an excellent system that's going to really improve service to the community and also take a lot of stress off of our dispatchers. I can't imagine what you do in that type of situation where you're dealing with a medical emergency, frantic, loved one, parent. And now you're trying to give them instructions when dealing with the flip card and enter data in the computer. This really sounds like a good exchange instead of record management to get this going as soon as possible.
Yep. I wholeheartedly agree. And the staff is very excited that we're bringing this forward at this time.
Yeah. Any more questions?
Not for me, sir. None for me.
Questions?
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you.
Melissa, thank you.
If there's no more questions at this time, I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion that we move to authorize the police department to purchase Pro QA from priority dispatch and the needed computer interface from Interpol.
I'll second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Next item on the agenda is consider four more locations for asphalt overlay work.
I've got four more locations I'd like to add to the overlay this year. And then South First, Edison to the Dead End. Charlotte, Park Boulevard to Second. Park Street, Eighth to Tenth. And Hoover, Eighth to Lakeview Lane and Lakeview Lane, Hoover to Dead End. I know that's two streets, but they blend together. It's really better to do them as one piece. And if you add that with the total for the Fifth Street plus the parking that we disapproved earlier, we're running about $130,000. We've got $150,000 in the budget. And I'd like to leave a little bit in there. We've got some intersections that we need to work on. Park and Maple, Thirteenth and Sycamore. Seventeenth and Maple needs a little work. And that would allow us to do that and stay within budget.
With, a few years ago, I think the street, you know, the water department or sewer department purchased a drag box that you can use to lay down...
The water department did.
Is that something that you can use in the intersection repairs?
I think so.
Temporary?
Cut it out, pull out all the old asphalt and drag it in there with that. Yeah. As long as you're using hot mix. Yeah.
Okay.
Because cold mix just won't, you can't drag it.
So that's the, in the proposal, the asphalt picked up by city per ton, the $55, 75 cents.
That's for us to do patching with.
Okay.
But the other price, 67, 69, that's for Hecker to lay it. That's in place.
So would you be using some large quantities there and doing some bigger patches yourself?
Probably. You know, a truckload or two at a time would be about 15, 20 ton or so at a time.
Yeah.
Over Cherryville, that's where they're making it right now. And they just started making it.
At Cherryville?
At Cherryville, yeah. Hecker does. Midwest Meadows.
Okay. I know some of those streets haven't had major work or any work in quite a few years.
A long time.
Yeah. There's some other streets down around Charlotte. I know it's where the water leak was over the weekend. There's a lot of areas down there. And it's good to see that we're going with these smaller projects...
Right, right.
Into those areas. A lot of people have mentioned that, hey, you forget about us down here. I'm glad that you...
Yeah. We're spreading it out.
Brought this up. I noticed in your notes that we don't have any base problems here. So this...
No, and Sean Turner, we went and viewed all these together a couple of weeks ago. He agreed.
Okay. Any questions? Question?
No. I don't have any questions.
If we have no questions, then I'll entertain a motion.
I move to authorize the city to add these four street sections to the previously approved locations to be overlaid this year. Second. Second motion.
Have a motion and a second? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Next item on the agenda, consider bids received to resurface the tennis courts. And Ken?
Well, the tennis courts were completely redone in 2007. And about every 10 years, they need maintenance. There are a couple of places near the net posts and one in the alley. And that's a tennis term, not... Near the one corner on Court One. And then the seam in the middle, because they were laid in two different post-tension lays. And so we sent out the specs and made sure that only tennis court companies could bid on them because it's a wonderful facility. And so we wanted tennis court companies to make the bids. So we got four bids. Trans-Texas is the one that built the courts in 2007. And their bid was 32. Mid-America, which is Daryl Snyder, and he had done an asphalt one sometime, I don't know, 20 years ago. And so, and we've worked with him. He did the Winfield courts, he did Neotichee courts. And his was the low bid, 28.8. And then McConnell, which is a company out of Kansas City, and they came down. Theirs was a little more than 32. And then the other company, I don't know anything about, but it was 40,000 anyway. So Mike Conway and I met. And actually, the one thing about the Mid-America, they took a separate bid where they could mark the 60-foot courts, which was a new rule put in about five years ago for kids under 10 to have 60-foot courts. And so their price to do that was 2,400. Well, Tracy Posh, Franz Walken, and I painted the 60-foot courts as they are now for a couple hundred dollars. So I don't know that necessarily Tracy, Ron and I'll do it, but Matt and Sam and I'll do it. And so that'll save the city the 2,400. And so we would recommend going with Mid-America, Daryl Snyder's group out of Wichita for the 28.8, which is under the budget, I believe, that was set a year ago for 35,000. And we got those estimates basically from Daryl Snyder and Steve Wright from about what it would cost. They said about 5,000 a court.
You said they'd done Neotichee. You've seen that court and are pleased with their work?
Yes. And they did Winfield's just a couple of years ago. Daryl's a Winfield boy. I've known him for 30 years, probably.
I won't hold that against him.
I noticed in their proposal that they had mentioned addressing any ponding areas and...
Right. That was part of the specs. They do that. They flood the courts and just let them dry naturally for like an hour, take chalk and mark any puddles that are out there. And those are the ones that turn dark. You can see on that picture on the right, there are a lot of, and we have, we've power washed them twice. But when those puddles just stay there, it gets, I don't know if it's mold or mildew or something, but it just is black. And it doesn't dry. So they're kind of slick.
Do you have any questions?
No, I don't.
Thank you, Ken. If we have no other questions, then I'll entertain a motion at this time.
I make a motion that move to award the low bid to Mid-America Court Works in the amount of $28,800 to resurface the tennis courts and authorize the mayor to sign the contract.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Next item on the agenda is consider a request from YPI to renovate the North Park Boulevard basketball courts.
Mayor, the president of YPI was planning on being here and he was in an accident. His hospital's unable to attend. So they gave us the details of what they wanted to do. Something we did bring up in the staff meeting is anything that is approved, make it also contingent that there is ADA accessibility because there will need to be an assessable route if they redo the court. So you just might want to include that if you determine you wish to approve it. And they're basically going to do a facelift. They're going to, that basketball court hasn't had any love for a long time. So it definitely is needed and it is utilized.
Yeah. The only thing that I saw, a description of the work. I think it needs to be outlined and determined exactly what will be done and how it will be done. And then, you know, if the rec center is going to maintain that area or what, that they be involved closely with the work, that it's approved, that we don't end up creating more...
Right.
Maintenance down the road. And, you know, all of our budgets are tight.
Right.
And it's great that we're having groups come in to take on some of these projects. But we have to look in the long run. But it's going to come back to us. And that the funding is complete, that it doesn't get halfway done. And then we have to pick up, you know, if it's addressing ADA, then they're going to fund the ADA work too. Because we just have to make sure that everything is...
Yes. And I didn't have the details when the packets went out. So that's why they're on the slide. And they did visit with Brent and Barb. Because they kind of share maintenance of that. So...
Yeah. Yeah. The funding issue is really... The funding issue is really, really critical that they have all the money available, that we don't get drug in with having to complete.
That's, that's part of the.
Projects.
That's why, especially about the how and the what and why, we'll be addressing that when we talked with them about the ADA improvements. Because, of course, they weren't even aware of that when they first proposed this. When you do a renovation like this, you've got to do the ADA work and so that's going to add some costs. But they are going to be responsible for the funding and doing whatever needs to be done there, so.
Yeah. Yeah, I think on the, the dog park, we're a little short on completion and there's issues, you know, with the ADA.
With the ADA there, right.
We have to get a lot of people using it. See a lot of traffic there, but we just need to watch our expenses that, you know, I, I see with this of being able to approve the concept, but to, I don't know if you're asking us for permission to go ahead and do it. I think they need to get staff a lot more information and work out, out those conditions before actually the commission would authorize work to begin.
So that's what we need to do for the ADA. Let's get all the details and lay it out exactly what they're going to do and then what ADA would require.
They didn't want to proceed with any fundraising until they took this to you first. So that, that's kind of what they were wanting is the blessings, like get, start, get their fundraising started.
Okay. Well, I could see that, you know, we would look at authorizing them to start fundraising and redefine or define the scope of work, but not to proceed until all that's addressed.
Maybe authorize them to move forward, subject to our approval of their final plan or something like that, so they can start the planning. That's a good plan.
Yeah, my, my question would be, I know they're not here, but I know they still have some ADA work to do at the dog park. And I guess my question.
This is YPI, that's Arturn.
Oh, okay.
So I think this is a different group.
Different group altogether, okay.
So, yeah, they don't have anything to do with the Arturn, with the dog, dog park.
Okay.
This is, there's two young professional groups, this is the second one.
And this is a different, okay. I was looking at both of them, this being the one.
Who is the YPI president?
I, it's Brett Kelly.
Brett's in the hospital?
Mm-hmm.
Have we, have we had an update from Arturn about where they're at for the?
David.
The ADA improvements?
I think David has an update on that. He met with them.
Okay.
If he could provide that to you.
Sure. Yeah, that'd be fun. Just curious as to where they're at, if they're still fundraising or they've got money to, to move on some of the meeting the ADA requirements out at the dog park.
Yes, sir.
Why don't we, why don't we finish this and then we'll come back to.
Okay.
To that in a minute. So on the request from YPI, any more questions?
Yes, sir.
Do we have an idea for a motion?
I, I think it'd be okay to say, I move to authorize YPI to move forward with planning for the renovations to the North Park Boulevard Basketball Court, subject to approval of the final plan. Is that close enough?
Sounds good. Do I have a second?
They authorized fundraising then too? Is that authorized them to start that?
No, that's their, that's their gamble.
Okay.
Have a motion? Did, did you get the motion, Kelly?
Move forward planning, subject to approval of the final plan.
Is that it?
Sounds good.
That sounds good to me.
Okay. So I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carry. Why don't we get your question under commission comments?
Okay. That's not part of the, not part of the agenda.
Yeah. Good next item, consider agreement from Trainer HL for interior demolition work at existing city hall. We each got a copy of the proposal. To proceed with interior demolition, I guess it'd be more of a select demolition. It would exclude the historic significant items that would be applicable for tax credit, historic tax credit on the project. What, this would be removing MEP systems back to source capping and doing everything in preparation for renovation work to begin. We talked briefly last meeting with Vance about the proposal and I had a question to clarify on his proposal that we received. And kind of the sequencing, we generally talk of a one project for the roof, tuck pointing and all that. And this would be handled in the same package so that interior demolition would sync with window replacement. And with a general contractor, provide continuity of the work and direction in, in leading up for the renovation. A lot of answers would be given so that actual renovation would cut down the unknown change orders.
So I apologize again for missing the last meeting for a funeral, but so, last one we approved was eighty-four thousand at the last meeting.
Yeah. If I have that slide, if you want to see what that was.
So this will bump us up to about a hundred?
Right, ninety, ninety-eight thousand.
Yeah, plus expenses. It said they charged us for mileage and fees and hotel stays and all that, so.
Typical non, or typical reimbursement.
Right, right.
Expenses. Looking at the, the cost of the work and some of the construction costs projected that we had, you know, the, the fee looked within percentages.
I didn't want to rehash something that you guys talked about last week, you know, my fault for missing the meeting, but I, I thought we'd talked about getting some other proposals if we were going to spend this kind of money. Just decided to move forward. The previous meeting at the, during the commissioner comments, I said that seems like an awful lot of money for, for what we're doing. And I, I thought you guys both agree that maybe we should get some other proposals.
Well, we, you know, I went back and looked at the costs again and based upon typical architectural fees and the projected budgets we had been given, it was in line with those.
Right.
The same as this and the timeframe of roofing problems, continued deterioration. And, you know, we've worked on this for.
Yeah, forever.
Six months and.
Yeah.
And not getting any guarantee of a better price since we're in the range.
Right.
Through discussion with Andy and Vance.
Okay, so this was.
Decided.
Yeah, to move forward.
Yeah.
So this was windows, roof, was it also the waterproofing of the basement and?
Right.
Okay.
And tuck pointing with the brick and the terracotta.
Okay.
And the roof.
All right. Okay, thank you.
Any, any questions or comments about the proposal? Do I have a motion?
I make a motion that we move to authorize an agreement for architectural services with Trainer HL in the amount of fourteen thousand, five hundred dollars to be funded from special use sales tax for buildings and facilities to create an interior selective demolition package for the historic nineteen sixteen city hall.
I'll second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carry. Next item, reports, update from Tricia.
Good evening. Okay, I'm a senior. House reports I wanted to share with you. An example for you guys to pass around because we have a ton of those. I wasn't sure if you had received this. We sent it out at the end of the year, last year, as our annual report for Montgomery County Action Council. I just wanted to make sure you all had a copy of that. We had a pretty successful year last year for, for business growth in our county. We still have a lot of work to do. Our unemployment's still very high. We're still losing population, but we are starting to see small businesses being formed all across our county. We had thirteen small businesses, several restaurants across the county, really critically needed services being added in, in some of our smaller communities in Montgomery County. So we're really starting to see a little bit of momentum, especially with entrepreneurial small businesses in, in our area. We have a lot of great partners that have been helping foster that, that culture in Montgomery County. And I think that's really starting to catch the attention even of some of our larger industries. Renew's Industries, which we just had their groundbreaking a couple of weeks ago, or their ribbon cutting, sorry, they're, they're done, they're up and running. And, and they said that was one of the, the reasons they really liked our county is the fact that we really had this cul, this culture of supporting small business and economic growth. On the flip side, however, is recruiting the large industries. And, you know, back in nineteen eighty-three, when Montgomery County Action Council was founded, that was the main thing that they were, they, was the goal of MAC. We had lost Halliburton and some other large industries. And so our base of what MAC is supposed to do is recruit large industries. And we've realized over the past thirty-five years that it's really important that we, we do all economic development from small business, large industry, housing, quality of life, all those pieces of economic development. Lately, however, a lot of my time has definitely been monopolized by those two things I've talked about, small businesses and, and large industry. And obviously, we're very aware of the Tyson Foods project. So I'll give you all a quick update on, on where that's at now and the history of where, where we were and how we've gotten to this point. So about this time last year, it was the end of May, about when I started MAC, I think it was my first or second week as the new executive director, we received a proposal from a site selector interested in sites that had a certain amount of water that could, that could be met, a certain amount of land that was already available, and met a certain demographic, population-wise, workforce-wise. We submitted, unknowing what, you know, what we were going after, because that's how all these site selection processes go. And found out a couple of months later that it, that it was Tyson Foods and that we had been selected as a top candidate here in Montgomery County between us and Tonganoxie in Kansas. And I think there might have been one other community that was involved, but they really, they've kept kind of quiet on it. But in the long haul, unfortunately, we were eliminated. And then it was between Tennessee, Humboldt, Tennessee and Tonganoxie, Kansas, and they chose to go to Tonganoxie. Unfortunately, their site selector definitely did not pick a good site, I would say, is probably one of the, definitely some gaps in that process if, if you watched it happen. The site was located next to a school. It was, it didn't have great access and, and really they didn't have a lot of feedback that they really needed to have to make that decision. So after that decided, after that went awry, they decided to go ahead and build the plant they're planning on in Humboldt, Tennessee. So since that point, that was announced in October, November of this, of twenty seventeen, they came back to Kansas and said they're still very much interested in Kansas. And the reason why is Kansas has a few things. One, the, a low cost of, of grain. Our corn, soybeans are very prevalent and we don't really have a lot of value-added sources for our grain to be sold to, to increase the profits that, that Kansas and Kansas farmers might see. Poultry is definitely one of those heavy industries that's, that uses that. And in fact, when we looked, we surveyed Montgomery County and some of our regional partners, regional counties around here, a large portion of our farmers that raise corn and soybeans are actually selling it to Tyson and some of the other poultry producers in Northwest Arkansas, interestingly enough. So that was one reason. Our climate is another. Geography, latitude, longitude works very well, this portion of the state of Kansas. And also the fact that we have the lowest elevation in the state of Kansas, water flows through here. And so we have a steady supply of, of fresh water going to Southeast Kansas. So those are the three reasons they, they've come back to Kansas to, to pursue this project. We have been diligent in doing as much research on this in the background as we possibly can. And we've really tried to take a different turn on economic development than you normally might see. Normally, we're in that site selection process where we're just trying to court them and figure out if we, if we fit their needs. But in this way, it's kind of like a job interview. We're interviewing them, they're interviewing us, and we're going to see if we're a good fit. They like to say that we're dating, is what Tyson likes to tell me. At this point, I don't know if we've quite met the parents, but we're kind of in that range, time-wise, because I have not yet met their CEO, but I think that's probably on the horizon. We have had a lot of meetings. We did our, our presentation where we went through, you know, our site. They've looked at the site several times now. They've been, they've been in Coffeyville. They came to our annual board meeting. Their, their chief engineer, Ted Burnett, came to our annual board meeting by surprise, about an hour notice, he showed up. So they've been very forthcoming with information about what they're looking for. They've invited me to, to go out and, and speak with the team in Humboldt, Tennessee, which I did about a week and a half ago. Met with their team to really see, how did this work in Humboldt, Tennessee and learn from, from their mayor, learn from their city staff, learn from some of their elected officials, utility officers, people like that that really understand what we might be going through on, on Montgomery County's side, to get a better grasp of what we need to be planning for. It really helped getting that knowledge of what they've done and how they've been able to do it successfully. So hopefully, we can do, you know, a copy and paste type situation here in Montgomery County. So the process is moving forward. We're having great conversations. And I think at this point, on their end, we're probably at least a year out because of the next piece I was going to talk to you about, which is just researching this industry as a whole. As you may or may not be aware, poultry has not ever been in the state of Kansas. It will, at least in the last twenty, thirty years. There used to be some smaller poultry farms even in Southeast Kansas. If you go head towards Joplin, you can see some of the old, old barns. But no modern poultry production is, is currently operating in the state of Kansas for broiler production for protein. So there's a lot of work to be done. Two years ago, the state of Kansas, Kansas Department of Agriculture put together a strategic plan that outlined what it was going to take to get poultry in Kansas. And they started this process, which is why Tyson showed interest in the state of Kansas, was because of all this work by Kansas Department of Agriculture. But if you read that plan, you can clearly see there's a lot of challenges that we're going to have to overcome. A lot of work that's going to have to be done in order to show Tyson and to show our citizens that we are a good fit for poultry. So we've gone through workforce, pretty thorough workforce analysis done with Kansas Department of Labor, Kansas Works. Tyson even had a team that did a thorough workforce analysis with their data that they have access to. And we've met their, their criteria for workforce, which I was very pleased to hear. We have about nineteen thousand people just on the Kansas and bordering communities of Oklahoma within forty, with about forty minutes drive that are currently underemployed or unemployed. So they're making less than thirteen dollars an hour. That, knowing how far people typically commute into our region, the, the unemployment rates we're seeing that surround Southeast Kansas and Northeast Oklahoma, and the traffic patterns even that we receive from ODOT and KDOT, we can see, you know, where people are driving in and driving out. So that was really great data to learn. The next piece is going to be your natural resources, and that's the piece that we're currently really digging in on. There's a lot of data that we need to learn. Kansas Department of, of Water, KDHE, has been very involved with this piece. We're currently working with several world. We're currently working with several world water districts to find out what their capacity is, if they have the capacity, what their water line sizes are, where their water lines even go, and what condition those water lines are in. So if we could even sustain the four hundred barns that would be necessary for this project. The next piece of this is really to have some community conversations about our natural resources. So we're hosting a meeting on June eleventh. It'll be at the Coffeyville Community College. It is in their big cafeteria, their student union cafeteria. You have to register. Go to our website to register, actioncouncil.com. And, you know, we do, you have to register in short time. I can't stress that enough because the space is very limited. And so we need to be able to tell how many facilitators we need to have there. If you have a crowd of five or six hundred people, we need to make sure we have enough people to have those conversations, experts and so forth. So I strongly encourage registration. If you don't register, you probably won't get a seat. That's just kind of how it works with that space. Marty Garage is for a party, ends up being a packed house in Coffeyville, I imagine. Something like this will probably be a pretty similar situation, so.
Tricia, when they made the announcement in October, they listed three cities in Kansas?
Yes, I'm sorry. Sedgwick County was one of those. They have removed themselves.
Okay.
And Cloud County is one of those as well. I think we are most certainly the number-one community for the state of Kansas. I don't think, Cloud County is not out of it. But I think that if Cloud County makes sense, there might be an alternate type of plant that they might get. I'm not sure what they're currently discussing, but their workforce would not sustain the size of plant that we are looking at.
Population the whole county would not.
Right. Yeah, their entire county only has about five to six thousand people, I think, in Cloud County. So very, very small rural area, sixteen hundred jobs, plus the, you know, the one to two hundred farmers that it would take to operate all the barns, plus the dirt work, plus the construction, plus the service industry to service all of those people. I just don't, I don't think it probably will make a lot of sense.
Plus the proximity to Arkansas, I would think we'd be a clear choice of Cloud County.
Yeah. Yeah, we're a two-and-a-half-hour drive to their corporate headquarters. And I think that's one thing that they really liked about Montgomery County. Humboldt, Tennessee is still a six-hour drive for them to get to. You know, this is going to be their shining star, showpiece plant that they're going to want to show their customers. They're going to want to show the McDonald's CEO and the Wendy's CEO and all of the other customers that they have. You know, ninety-five percent of all chicken that you eat out is made by Tyson, pretty much. So those are a lot of customers that they're going to want to show this shining star plant. So it's very convenient that we would be so close. Ted Burnett owns his own small plane. He's a pilot enthusiast or a flight enthusiast. And he says it's nice that he could actually drive here. He doesn't have to fly. So it's a nice convenience for their executive team to be able to be here and boots on the ground, much easier. That also helps when it comes to getting the plant up and running. So the phasing, once they decide Montgomery County is the place they're going to go, based on the timeline we've seen in Humboldt, Tennessee, it's going to take at least six months to do all the permitting, to do all of the groundwork analysis, the surveying, all of that work. Then they start construction, and then that will take eighteen months from that point. And then, once they are done with construction, it'll take at least three to six months to bring the plant online. Because they will do, as they described it to me, they will literally start with just chicken legs that they're being brought up from an already established facility, probably in Arkansas, to train the staff on how to process that piece. And then they'll work on another side of the bird, or they'll work on the full bird, and then they'll break it up as the plant goes on. Because there's several different lines that process it, as you might see in your grocery aisle. So, you know, each one of those things is done differently. So we're looking at least a three-year timeline before they're up and running at the soonest, I think. But I think that's a really good thing. It gives us the time that we need to work with KDHE, with all of our water advisory groups in the region to make sure we have very solid best management practices, work with states across the country of what's gone well, what hasn't gone well, you know, in Georgia and Arkansas, places where they have had poultry for a very long time. Kansas is pristine territory. And we have the opportunity to really set the example nationwide on how we can do this right. So I'm really excited about that opportunity. Kansas Department of Agriculture is very excited about that opportunity. And I think that we're a good candidate. I think it's a good fit. But I encourage everyone to call, email. I can't get answers unless I get questions, is what I like to say. Because this is a very, very complicated industry. I have learned more about chicken and chicken litter and water than I've ever thought I would ever want to know about in my entire life. It's funny, walking by the grocery aisle now, and my son goes, "Oh, look at those chicken legs." And I'm like, "No, son, this is how these chicken legs are processed." And I realize that's probably way too much for a three-year-old. But yeah, it's a fascinating process, and it's an industry that's not going away. It's one of the few industries in the United States right now that's growing far outpacing several other industries, just in the United States. So I think it's a good opportunity for us to catch that, that growth. And, you know, if we can grow with it and see some of the other industries we've seen in Humboldt, they're a smaller town than both Independence and Coffeyville. They've only got seven, eight thousand people in their city. They had a brand-new Walgreens. They had several really nice restaurants, sit-down restaurants. They had things galore that have just popped up since this announcement's happened. So they've had six months and the planning that's gone in to try to get some of these things going. They showed me the groundwork plans of companies that said, "Okay, I'm coming. We're going to build this new restaurant here. We're going to build this new pharmacy here. We're going to expand our Walmart to allow for more opportunities." So those are things that I think we could see if we got a plant like this in our county.
I have a question on the Humboldt, Tennessee plant. At what point did Humboldt start? The length of the time period, was it a three- or four- or five-year timeframe that they thought that they would be a good site for Tyson? And then when Tyson actually chose that site to make a three-hundred or three-hundred-and-fifty-million-dollar investment? What was the timeline on that? Do you know?
Yeah, I do. So it's very similar to what we have been doing more recently with the West Laurel Industrial Park and the Independence Airport Industrial Park. You know, we're starting to lay the groundwork of making it a certified site. And that's what they had started about three, four years ago. So they started doing GIS analysis of what infrastructure's there and started matching up the infrastructure they knew that they already had in place and maybe could improve within a certain range to meet different industries. And knowing that about an hour north, they had, Union City, Tennessee, had a Tyson facility, they were able to work with that regional partner to say, "Okay, this is what we need if we want to recruit something similar." So they started working on that about three years ago. And it wasn't until about one year ago, it's about this time, well, it would have been a year and a half ago, I guess, is what they told me. I think they started working on it in December, January of sixteen, seventeen, really actively recruiting Tyson for this site. So they've been already doing this for a year and a half than we have been. So we've been working on this for about a year. So they've got six months on us. But they also had already done a lot of due diligence. They already had an economic development grant ready to go. They had a USDA federal grant ready to go to put in the infrastructure that they were going to need. And so once they got the confirmation that they were the site, they were able to pull that trigger pretty quick to get that federal funding to improve the infrastructure that they needed to meet the needs for Tyson. So that's something I'm also doing in the background, is just trying to work with the EDA and USDA. In fact, I will be heading up to Manhattan next week to meet with the United States Department of Agriculture Director to talk to them about our project and what we might be able to do to get some federal funding down in our county.
And as far as Tyson, when they eventually chose this site, on Tyson's guideline, at what point did they, when they were looking at down the road, they were looking at five years down the road, that they would be looking at in making a three-hundred-million-dollar investment in another facility? Would that be, would I be in the ballpark saying five-year Tyson was looking at?
I think they're building a much more rapid pace than that.
More sooner, quicker than a five-year process.
Yeah.
I was just curious. So where is Tyson at now if they have a plant in Humboldt, Tennessee? So their next short-range plan, if you want to call it short-range, would be, are they looking at maybe another facility three years down the road, four years down the road?
They want to be in operation three years down the road from now.
Down the road, okay.
So that means they would probably make a decision in the next year and then start the process. They made it pretty clear from the very beginning, January of twenty seventeen, that they had two plants they were ready to pull the trigger on. They've got the funding already set aside, they're ready to go for two plants. Humboldt, Tennessee is plant number one. So we're after plant number two. So those have already been budgeted, they've already been allocated. They already purchased their steel and everything in advance before the steel tariffs even went into place. So they've already got some of the pieces ready to go. It's just a matter of studying the infrastructure, studying the site, understanding that relationship between farmers and Tyson, what those contracts will be, what water supply looks like, what natural gas supply looks like, all those pieces, very complicated pieces that match up in a perfect jigsaw puzzle. And that's where we're at, trying to figure that piece out.
And as far as us getting to a point where, like Humboldt, they had USDA grant already approved and they had economic development funding, how far are we down the road to get to a point where we would have all our ducks in order to where?
Chickens.
Or chickens, excuse me.
Yeah, get our chickens in a row.
Get the right animal here. Chickens in order to where that would facilitate the process and they would say, "Well, you've met all the requirements." And so we might be looking at a year and a half down the road?
The only timeline I have is a year from now maybe would be a decision, and then from there on. Now, the site that we have offered to them,
Right.
that's a site that we had already gone through kind of a site certification process on. So there's already a phase one and phase two completed on it, environmentals. We're working with KDHE because there is some oil wells that are currently pumping out there. The city has leased. And going through that process of do we need to cap those, where the building would be located, if those would need to be capped, cleaned up, whatever that needs to be done. But other than that, the site's ready. And that was the reason why we submitted that site, and that's the reason why we were selected as a top candidate. So the site itself, we're good on. It's met all the requirements for water, it's met all the requirements for natural gas, it meets all the requirements for topography, even soil bearings met what they needed to have, or borings, needed what they needed to have. So the site's good. The last piece, really where we're at, is where those farmers are going to go and the water access to those farmers, how much that water's going to cost, how much the natural gas is going to cost. Then they'll run a cost-benefit analysis for each one of those barns. And then they'll base that contract that they will pay those farmers on what that baseline cost is and then add that profit on there and see which one, if it makes sense. If it doesn't make financial sense for the farmers, and it doesn't make financial sense for Tyson, we're probably out of the running. So that's where that's going to go. So in the background, I'm working with USDA to see if we can get improvements done to these world water districts so that we can get those costs as low as we can possibly get it for these farmers, for our utilities. So that's what I'm doing in the background to try to make sure that contract matches what Tyson expects. And from what I understand, it's pretty generous, from what I saw in Humboldt, from their contract. But as to the USDA and EDA grant, you can't get those grants until you have the project. So you can write it all and you can have it ready on speculation of this is what I think is going to happen, but you cannot submit until Tyson says, "We're coming to your community." So, you know, I'll be working on that probably for the next year, making sure those are ready to go and working with probably the Regional Planning Commission or someone like that to help us put those together.
So with a decision being made, let's say, within a year's time, you're looking at four years, actually, three, between the permits and the, all that that's going to take place and the plant actually being built and up and running, so you're looking at?
Yeah, three to four years.
Yeah, 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 easily.
So that's good. It'll give us time to adjust for housing development. We can plan for infrastructure. We can start to improve roads where we know those farms are going to go. We can start putting together some capital improvement budgets for all of our communities, not just in Montgomery County, but in the region to really meet the needs for this. So it's good that it'll take that long. It gives us some time to plan.
And as far as meeting, bringing the costs down, in this case, water and making sure we have water supply and all that, at some point, those costs will either come down to a point where it'll be economically feasible for them to come here. And if they don't, then that's just not going to happen.
Right. That's pretty much how the decision will be end up being made at this point.
And at that point, when will we get to that point, to where there would be a determination made that costs are low enough to where we're good, or we're not going to be able to get the costs down? And it doesn't look like it's going to happen. You have any idea?
I don't have any idea on that one. I wish I did. Based on the conversations we're having with them, I think it's very positive. I think they'll happen soon, but they haven't brought that team to town yet. Their groundbreaking in Humboldt, Tennessee is May thirtieth. They probably aren't going to start bringing boots to the ground in Montgomery County till after that's completed, at least. So hopefully, by the end of the summer, they'll have a team here. Because they've got to get their ducks, their chickens in a row in Humboldt, Tennessee, making sure that's that process and their construction's going well.
All right. Thank you, Tricia.
Yeah, absolutely.
Sounds like we're looking at like a seven-year process from what you talked about numbers when Humboldt started getting their chickens in a row in development. And by the time production actually starts, we're in like a seven-year window. But with our limited economic development money, we can't go and attract the large companies as well as we can with our economic development fund that we have. We've got potential for smaller, you know, ten, five employee. You know, the Tyson is exciting, but how are we going? You know, where we've really got potential to bring these smaller ones to reality, how do we have that happen? I know you mentioned to me about our industrial park, that Department of Commerce mentioned it's not at a condition that would be conducive for an industry. So, you know, I think for us as independents, we need help to get that, and we need to start going after those with the money we generate from our franchise tax. It gives us a little more flexibility to help those companies, the smaller ones that, you know, for us to come in and look at even the impact of Tyson on independents and capital projects. We're looking at level on sales tax revenue and a declining appraisal, or at least level. So we can't take on a lot of burdens for those. But how do we partner with you to get and draw those smaller ones in? How can we partner closer to you to take some of the load off of you and yet get our name out and let us know what we can do?
So there's a couple of things I think would be very helpful coming from the community side. One thing that I've been working on, I'm on the Board of Directors for KEDA, the Kansas Economic Development Association. And we have been working on implementing a site certification program that communities can implement pretty far down the line before you have to hire some expertise. So it reduces costs considerably for communities that might go through that process. So back in, I think it was like nineteen ninety-eight, two thousand-ish, we did, we worked with McCollum Sweeney, I think they're out of Georgia, to do one for the airport industrial park, the West Laurel Industrial Park, Coffeyville's site, the site that we're using for Tyson, actually. So they went through a site certification process already. So we have a lot of that data put together, so I'm going to be using that. So I'm going to be using that. The problem with that is similar to what you and I have had conversations with in the past, Mayor, is we need updated GIS information for those sites we have in the West Laurel Industrial Park. The GIS data is not updated to the point where I can confidently say, well, I know we have a 12-inch water main or I know we have, you know, this railroad spur that's an active railroad spur. So working with all of our utilities, working with your GIS folks, whether it be Trans Systems or whoever does that in-house, getting that update done is probably one of the most critical next steps we really have to get done. I can't stress how fast these RFPs come in and how fast I have to get the responses out. I had one that came through on my desk. I had four hours to submit. And I did, I submitted West Laurel, but I knew that that data might be outdated for what we have for the GIS information because we knew that there was some work that had been done out there. But it's not updated in the system. So, you know, I have to go by what I have in the system. I can't go on speculation. So that is key. The next piece is doing that site certification process. It'll walk us through step by step on how to make that site as marketable as we possibly can make it. And those are sites that are, you know, three, seven, 10 acres that fit those small industries, the five, 10, 30 employee industries perfectly. So I would love to see the West Laurel Industrial Park filled up with, you know, four or five buildings over there by the FedEx Center that have five to 10 employees in each. And then maybe one bigger one that has 100 employees just north of Mattcor. So that's the plan, but we have to make that plan to market our community. And we're working really hard to do that as it is right now. I put together some pretty nice marketing materials that I took to Las Vegas this week. I just got back from Las Vegas yesterday, marketing retail. So I put together some maps that showed all the different sites that are available in independents in downtown and out on West Main, out by Walmart, because those are really key priorities for most retailers, and advertised those. So, you know, we're working on the marketing materials. I could probably use some help for marketing, but we, you know, we're doing what we can with our two-member staff. And we do have some help with some marketers now and then that we contract with to help us get some stuff put together. Joanne Smith has helped us in the past. Lisa Keen's helping us with the Tyson project with Dream On Marketing. So we do get some outside assistance and that helps us. But those two things coming from the city really are critical. So, and I imagine that's probably going to be part of your strategic plan anyway is, you know, how do you plan for improving job growth and using the resources you already have? You have city-owned land. How do we best use that to get some, get those back on the tax rolls?
I think we need that input so we can take it from not planning to reality that, you know, these are good points that will help in preparing our sites to make them marketable. But we really need to reach out to these smaller businesses and find out what we're doing wrong or what we can change or how we can offer some incentives for the small business.
I think one thing that I found was really helpful when I was the City of Coffeyville is putting together incentive guidelines that establish this is what's going to happen every single time and putting it out there. Because 99% of the time, they're going to look at the information we have on the website for what the incentives are, where the sites are, what utilities are, before they ever call me, before they ever call a city staff person. So if we could get some guidelines put together that said, okay, for every job you create, we will give you $500 with, something Coffeyville did was $500 plus a $250 bonus if they live in the city limits of Coffeyville. So that we put together that plan. If it's a targeted industry, so it's a 300-plus employer, then they bump that up to $1,000. And they have those structures in place. Makes the decision easy for you, makes the decision much easier for your staff because your staff can have those conversations with those companies and feel confident in that, that they're following what you have told them to do. And it really provides kind of this process for your small businesses to go through.
Okay.
And that's been, it's really helped a lot with some of these projects.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Yep. Any other questions? I've kept you for a very long time. Thank you so much.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you, Trish.
Yep. Oh, sorry. Last thing, there's flyers out there that have that report that I gave you. And then Rural Opportunities Zone, quickly plug. If anyone's new to our county, they can get a five-year income tax abatement and then also student loan forgiveness. So especially if they get an employer that would be willing to sponsor them. So this information's out there on the table up there.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, the next item is City Manager's Report.
A couple of quick things. Just wanted to let you know that Finance Director skews tonight. He's in Wichita attending a budget workshop that I'm by the Kansas State Department Administration, a day-long workshop there. And a second thing, quickly, the community-based strategic plan. As you know, the consultant was here last week. Just want to remind everybody, there's still a chance to provide input. He met with a lot of groups and individuals last weekend, but the survey is out there online still. So encourage if you haven't done that yet to do that and you can all get a paper survey as well. So it's moving along. The Strategic Planning Action Advisory Committee, they're doing a great job getting these things set up. That's all.
Sounds like it's coming along pretty good.
Yeah.
Okay. Next item, Commissioner's Comments.
Yes, I do. I brought it up. I was confused between, you know, professionals and our turn, but I was just curious as to where we were, where they were with their, if they were still fundraising and where they were as far as making the ADA improvements out at the dog park.
With Michael and Ryan Goode. And we discussed the need and they don't want to put it against the fence. They want the pad across from their current pad. And they have their reasons why they don't want the pad against the fence. That's about $10,000. So I need to get that information back to Michael and Ryan. They're going to do some different things on the inside with edging and maybe some AB3 stone to make the pathways so you don't have to do cement on the inside. So we've gotten, I've received some stuff from the US Access Board that I'm going to be forwarding to them to help them with that part of it. And I think from there, they're going to get back to their group and figure out how they're going to fundraise it. They did ask if the city would be interested in helping any. And, you know, I said that would have to be considered in the budget process for ADA for next year. So that question was raised during the meeting, so.
Okay.
But that's, you know, that's.
So they're wanting to put their ADA parking on the west side of the drive?
Correct. He does, they don't want it against the fence and they have reasons. And I would refer to have you visit with Michael or Ryan Goode as to why they don't want any parking along the fence.
They do realize from the parking, then they've got an accessible route.
Yeah, they got to make the accessible route. Now you got to, because it's gravel, you know, you're going to have to do a very thick sidewalk to go across so it doesn't get broke up and that just adds a cost.
And probably AB3 isn't the road.
And it might be.
Screenings packed down smoother.
Better, yeah.
Because the AB3, the larger rock.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I think this is kind of some things we need to look at is when an entity like this, they should have had a full plan.
Correct.
They should have had a complete plan to get a building permit with the parking laid out. And I know they had a survey, but, you know, to come back and address some of these issues now with the cost and hard surface ADA parking, even the hardware getting into the gates.
Yes.
The hardware's wrong for ADA accessible.
Yep.
It just, and new projects are required to be compliant at the time of completion or use.
Correct. Yes.
And they're subject to some other problems by not being completed.
You are correct. Yep.
Yeah. Do you have anything?
No, that's it. Thank you, David.
When we're, when we're in the budget process, but one thing, when we looked at our quality of life projects, Aquatic Center and the library, we were using money to maintain those out of the money that was left from quality of life funds. And as that goes away, we're not going to have money to maintain. And at the age of the facilities, maintenance is going to increase. So we need to kind of get that.
Yeah, we're aware of the quality of life. I don't know what the current balance is in there, but it is dwindling fast and we've been using that, especially for the Aquatic Center. And it's aging and it needs some significant, we're already doing some significant work there. And we just had a, an analysis done from an inspector, work risk analysis type of a thing, went through the whole Aquatic Center and there's quite a few things there. One of them, significant enough that we have to build a wall where the chemical room is, right now, the chemical room, the wall doesn't go all the way to the ceiling so it can, it goes over into another room and that's not acceptable. So we need to do some things like that that we'll be looking at in our capital planning.
Yeah. One thing with the pools like that, they're so unique that startup and shutdown can take some special knowledge. And I wondered if the surrounding communities, if there's a service of like an engineer or a startup company that would come and purge the pumps, you know, do the process correctly that maybe could preserve or maintain our equipment a little longer or they're familiar with the whole system then that could give us some directions and some earmark to plan, you know, pump replacement life or filter bed or, you know, the controls so that, you know, with the surrounding towns, how do they do it? Is an opportunity that we partner together so we could schedule a crew. Those are so hybrid and like you said, the chemicals involved that a lot of times we have a problem before we realize we should have done something. So, but I know it's, in the past, when we would get a pump replacement or chairs, we kept, and we kept saying, you know, we got to watch, this money's going to be gone. Now what are we going to do? And maybe if we could get a line item in our budget for maintaining the pool particularly and the library, I think is another building that we have another operator in, but yet we own the building.
Right.
And the same thing with HVAC systems there is going to be an issue.
In regards to the pools, just let me just say, I mean, we do a lot of maintenance with our utility staff already. They clean filters and the pumps, replacing pumps and Terry and staff do, they do a great job. They know the system pretty well, but we'll certainly look in to see the speciality of the companies, if they, other pools use this type of a company to come in and do that type of thing. But we do a lot in-house, you know, it's not the Recreation Committee, you know, they run the pool, we own it. And that's why we've been checking on it, doing a lot of what needs to be done there in terms of maintenance and keeping that building in shape. It needs some, it needs some work, but, you know, the startup and the chemicals and so forth, we'll definitely check into that.
Okay. I think that's probably the only thing. The others not, not significant. I think we've gone over most of the other questions I had. No more commission comments?
None.
Then we'll move to public concerns. I do have a request from Debbie Miller. Debbie, would you like to address the commission?
For many years, many of us worked hard to replace an inscrupulous city manager and elect commissioners whom would ensure the city would run more, would run more responsibly. What we received at the May 10th commission meeting was all our hard work and great expectations for a move our city forward city manager and a more effective city government, government having gone for naught. The long-awaited reps from Trainer HL took the podium to discuss a proposal for improvements to the former city hall. Unfortunately, Mr. Whitehead had failed to find and share with commissioners an important email the Trainer HL rep had sent to him four days before the meeting. Later came yet another heated discussion about the city's deplorable financial records, which Mr. Whitehead has allowed to deteriorate to the point they are incredulous and virtually useless. As always, Mr. Borovitz answered commissioners' questions in incomprehensible riddles and Mr. Whitehead made excuses for not hiring a city treasurer. Many of us have started to wonder what they're trying to hide, how any city official can absolutely guarantee that no embezzlement of our taxpayer funds has occurred and why if we're paying Mr. Borovitz and Mr. Whitehead a combined total of over $170,000 a year in pay and benefits, the city's financial records have been so irresponsibly managed. But most of all, many of us wonder how much longer our elected officials are going to tolerate this inexcusable incompetency. But then came the most amazing spectacle of the evening. City Manager Whitehead launching his well-researched dissertation about some of Mayor Koflic's inaccurate statements. As many of us witnessed his often disrespectful exchange with Mr. Koflic, we wondered how Mr. Whitehead had found time to research his long eloquent rebuke but could not find time to check his emails so he could have found and shared with commissioners the important and timely email from the trainer rep. Many of us taxpayers still feel we deserve a city manager whom will provide the sound leadership the city needs to move forward, will guarantee the integrity of the city's finances, will be as concerned about taxpayers' best interest as he or she is about city staffs, and will respect our elected officials. At the May 10th meeting, Mr. Whitehead noted, there's nothing worse than hiring the wrong person for a job. For many of us, he's the wrong person for our city manager's job, but only our commissioners can determine his future. However, many of us hope that whatever our commissioners decide, it will result in us taxpayers finally having the motivated, fastidious, and effective city manager that we pay for, we deserve, and we so desperately need to move our city forward in the most productive, cooperative, and responsible manner possible. Thank you.
We had no other requests to address the commission, so this time we'll adjourn the meeting.[1781.83]